See all of you here tonight. Before we start our meeting, would you bow with me in a word of prayer? We come here tonight united in our work for the city and community we call home. We are grateful for citizens who volunteer their time and talents and for city staff who choose to work here and share their knowledge and experience. May we be mindful in our thoughts, reasonable in our deliberations, and careful with our decisions. Amen.
Amen.
So I'd like to call the meeting of February 4th, 2020 to order. And first, I would like to welcome our new interim city manager, Mr. Rod Hogan. We're happy you are here.
Thank you.
And hope you are finding everything comfortable and pleasant and friendly.
Everything's wonderful.
Okay, terrific. Well, we're happy you're here. And we will have our community recognition. I would like for Mr. George Ellis to meet me down here. And you can just come here and stand next to me. I have a couple of things. One, we had wanted to recognize you in December, but you were a little bit busy.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that.
Keeping your trains on schedule.
Of course, of course, of course. So you've been collecting and playing with trains for over 50 years, is what I've been told.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. And you have been doing these displays, wonderful displays, at the Railroad Depot for nine years.
Nine years, that's correct.
And nearly 10,000 people have seen that display. That's just, that's incredible. So I would like to know, well, first of all, I noticed that this year you added a little Dolly's Diner and Bancorp South, and then you had a billboard for the Fredonia Hotel.
Correct.
So you must really plan what you're going to do for the coming year.
I, I do. I try to make, make things a little different each year. It's like in a store, you change up where the merchandise is. People come in and see something new. I added a KTRE television station this year. And when Donna McCollum came in, she saw that, just drew her right into the display. She was there for over an hour. She did a very, very fantastic job this year. Really, really appreciate that.
Well, that's great. One of the other things I wanted to ask you to comment on a little bit is about the STEM influence that you feel this has on kids.
Well, in the track work itself, there's a lot of geometry. You've got physics, because the things that I deal with in the model railroad is the same things that they deal with on the real railroad, okay? Tightness of curves, induced drag with the wheels and flanges on the wheels. Technology, I use a handheld device now to communicate with the locomotive instead of standing by the transformer. Okay? And the math end of it, well, you've got physics, but also you've got electricity and AC and DC currents and wiring, different gauges. So it's, it all kind of wraps up into a a package of STEM, but you can add an A in there too. STEAM, you could, or artistic part of it.
Sure. And it justifies play.
It's, it's operating these days.
I got you. I see.
That's what I tell my wife anyway.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. Isn't that something? Well, we have a couple of things for you. One, this is a brick representing the Brick Streets of Nacogdoches.
Very nice.
And it is a small token of the appreciation the city has for the work you do every year and how much we appreciate that.
Well, that'll find a place on a flat car.
Good. That would be great. The other gift we have is actually a train Christmas ornament from 2019 from the state capitol.
Wow.
And so I want you to have that.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Now, I would like for Jessica to come join us. And council, you want to come down for a quick picture?
Would you like to come up here?
Oh, yeah. Would you like to? We don't think you would like Anne. Invite her. That would be just fine. Please, come on up.
You have to go because he said please.
Yeah. And then we need to squeeze in a little bit?
She's the conductor.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you, Anne. Next item on our agenda is our open forum. The open forum is the public's opportunity to address council on any matter related to the city that is not on the agenda. Our rules and procedures for council meetings apply to the open forum. Disrupting a public meeting is a violation of state law and no cursing is allowed. Your comments are limited to three minutes. And in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. Mr. David Hedrick, would you like to come forward?
I spoke back in January. And mainly, it was negative comments about suddenly. Then all of a sudden, my three minutes were up. And I didn't get to say anything positive about them. I felt like I needed to come back and say some good things about them because they're not just ogres, you know? It's like, if you can get one-on-one with someone, like, I don't deal with them on the phone. I just go down to the office here, get one-on-one with somebody and deal with them, things smooth out. I don't like some of the practices still, but that way things work okay. I do want to caution the city, if the city were to get involved with them as far as contracts or whatever in buildings and offices for the city, gotta be careful of those guys. They just, they just think about themselves. And when I was here before, I wanted to thank you, Shelley, because you were so encouraging. You were sitting back there with this big ol' smile on your face. You just warned me to, to get out there. And this young lady here, she was just very, asking great questions and that sort of thing. That was very good. And this is a totally different topic, but the, when they show this program on the government access program, it keep, all it says is October of 2018. There's nothing on there since then. And I don't understand why that is. Whoever is in the middle of this, maybe someone thinks they're doing something right, but it's not on my TV. And I think someone should look into that to make sure things are being handled correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hedrick. Next, we have our consent agenda. And would council like to remove anything for discussion? And if not, chair would entertain a motion for approval?
I would like to remove 5D, the Lenana Creek North Trail renovation project. Not because I have any particular problem with it. I just think that it's something that the community is really interested in. And also, I was not here when the discussions about, about this were taking place. And so I would love to hear a little bit of background about it.
Mr. Bray. Could you give a little historical background on this project? Because it has been a little while.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Brian Bray. You're Director of Community Services. And Councilman Fisher had a great question, because this actually, this project started in 2015. So it's been, it's been a few years. When Clayton Collier approached me and said, you know, the sort of the beginning of Clayton's interest in the trails. You know, we all know Clayton's been running up and down the trails for years, but that really started his, his drive to improving them. And approached city staff and said, hey, I really want to help. And so through his hard work, we were able to form an outstanding application, submitted it to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. We received approval for it in 2016, which then we did environmental studies. We had Cliff Shackelford. Several other locals, SFA faculty helped us clear those hurdles. And then unfortunately, Tech State and Texas Parks and Wildlife kind of merged on their grant funding part, and it bogged down. And so that's why from 2017 until 2019, nothing took place. It wasn't from anyone's other standpoint than they were trying to figure out how to get us the funds. So in late 2019, we received notice that, hey, you're cleared to proceed. So then we went ahead and developed, we hired Hydrax to do the plan, since it's a pretty sensitive area. You know, we're talking about the Lenana Creek bottom, and what better company than, than Hydrax who does that every day of the week? So they developed the bid packet for us. We sent out the bids. And Drury was by far the lowest and most qualified bidder, which brings us up to today. So hopefully that wasn't too short, but I didn't want, I didn't, I didn't want to give too much detail and bore you.
And then maybe explain just a little bit about what the actual project is.
This will give us an improved trail surface from Austin Street up to Maroni. So if you can imagine Maroni Drive going across university, that's the northern part that we're going to be improving. Then there will be a parking lot that will hold about 20 vehicles, and then that improved surface going south. So the reason I say improved surface is, a big part of Lenana Creek Trail is what people refer to as the cattle trail. It's just sort of a single person width trail. And that exists today from Austin all the way up to the North Loop. So that's all city property that we're talking about improving. But this gives us an approximately six-foot-wide stabilized soil path. We could have done asphalt. We could have done concrete. Those are obviously much more expensive. They're also not as aesthetically pleasing when you're walking through a prairie or through a forest. But also, it's difficult to maintain in these bottom lands. So with the stabilized soil, we can actually have parks crews go down there in a Bobcat or in a wheelbarrow or in a pickup, depending on the conditions, and be able to make repairs to the trail. We know it's going to get washed out from time to time. I mean, that's just the nature of creeks and rivers. So the trail will give us an approximate, or the, the project will end up with approximately six-foot-wide trail from Austin, where it's going to connect to a concrete underpass, all the way up to Maroni, where we'll have a trailhead. So in that trailhead, we'll then be able to launch people going north if they want to go mountain biking or just jogging.
Two questions. The stabilized soil, is that what you're talking about with the alternate bid one?
Correct. So the, the base bid had a concrete mix in it, which is still a stabilized soil. But it's a, it's a less expensive product, but it also doesn't last as long. So that's why we pulled that out and had the alternate two be the lime fly ash, which is a little bit more costly. But we'll keep the trail in better condition for longer.
Great. And is this being the renovation, the trail renovation, is it being done in phases? And if so, what phase are we in?
We're in the beginning.
Okay.
And then Clayton and I have talked numerous times about, once this one's done, is applying through the same program to do the next section. We haven't defined how many sections there are, because Texas Parks and Wildlife keeps changing the amount of money that they fund. And so we didn't want to say, hey, we're going to do two miles, and then they only give us enough money to do a quarter of a mile. So it will be broken up into several sections going north. And just like we did when we applied for this one, hopefully you're all still here on council and you'll hear a presentation about the next section that we're going to be applying for.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So if no further discussion, that will stay on the consent agenda, and chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Should we approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. We approved the consent agenda as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. On our regular agenda, number six, receive Nacogdoches County Exposition and Civic Center annual report.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here today. My name is Anita Scott. I'm the Executive Director for the Nacogdoches County Expo and Civic Center. I'm here today to give you a brief overview of our last fiscal year and a look at what's coming in 2020, as we are already off to a really good start. My staff, my team, I guess, is not present with me today, but I'd like to recognize them in name because they are a huge part of what, of what we do at the Expo Center. And so I'll start by saying, Operations Coordinator Karen Klein, Administrative Assistant Carrie Scanlon, Maintenance Team Members Brad Hale, Darrell Hill, and Kent O'Neill, Event Staff Linda Parker and Stacy Aparicio, and our Concessions Manager Anna Ruston, and our Sheriff Deputy Timothy Windham. Our mission is the support of youth, agriculture, and community. Throughout the year, we hosted Ag in the class for the fourth graders across Nacogdoches County, Ag Day for the ninth graders, Pony Woods Youth Rodeos, Region Five High School and Junior High Rodeos, a country music concert to a sold-out crowd in our main arena, a three-ring circus. And the Agri Life Extension Office hosted continuing education programs to educate people on everything from hay testing to producing a healthy herd of cattle. In addition to individuals renting the facility for private events, our venue also provided a location for meetings, training, and banquets for city and county employees. Our local law enforcement agencies and nonprofit organizations also utilized the expo. So as you can see, the Nacogdoches County Exposition and Civic Center serves a multitude of functions for the citizens of Nacogdoches. In our fiscal year 2018-2019, we hosted 126 separate events. Ninety of those were one-day events, 14 were two-day events, and 22 were multiple-day events. These combination of events attracted an estimated 66,000 visitors, sold 494 RV spots at the Expo Center, and generated approximately 30,000, 3,000 hotel nights. And on our first attempts to use the Economic Impact Calculator provided by Destinations International, we had some questions about the program that couldn't be answered due to their tech being out of the office for the week that we were working on it. So in our efforts to remain efficient, concise, and conservative and transparent as possible, we resorted to an, to the old method of calculating our economic impact. And since Karen dedicated herself for over a week trying to find a resolution to the issue while he was out that we were experiencing with the program, and then the immaculate spreadsheet that she created to use the old method, it would be inconsiderate of her time that she spent working on it. It would be inconsiderate of me not to share her, her work with you. So anyway, with that being said, using the same method that we used to complete our report back in 2016, 2017, I believe, which was provided by the Office of the Governor for the State of Texas, we calculated our total direct spending at $2,437,909, and our estimated total economic impact at $2,965,697. That was what was on our report. Very conservative numbers. Once Ms. Joanna with the CVB was able to get some assistance from the Destinations International tech, she was able to calculate our direct business sales at $3,070,246. That's gas, mills, retail, recreation, and lodging. Our total economic impact, which includes indirect and induced income, which is monies earned and spent locally, is $4,273,477. The variance in those totals is due to Destinations International using formulas that are more detailed and in-depth that we were not able to calculate. But one of the things I like most about their program is the event impact summary, which gives the estimated total number of jobs supported by, by an event, which in our case was over 2,200 jobs that were supported by events held at the Expo Center. I just thought that was pretty cool. As of today, we are 127 days into our 2019-2020 fiscal year. And of these, of those 127 days, we have celebrated eight county holidays and already hosted over 45 individual events since October the 1st. Included in those events are a five-day county fair, two three-day youth rodeos, an extreme bull riding, a two-day gun show, a five-day Vermeer Forge Dealers Equipment Training Class, and successfully rescheduled concert for Cody Jinks where over 4,500 tickets were sold. If you remember, last year, I reported that members of our community would be on a TV show called Special Cowboy Moments. And that was aired on RFD TV. With the same money that was paid for those episodes, a new show will be aired on Wild Rides, TV show found on the Cowboy Channel on March the 8th, and that's going to be at 7:30 and at 9:00 PM. Be sure to tune in to the interview with Mr. John Mast and Mr. Tony Dawson, where they share some funny and some emotional stories that will, from their past, that will kind of tug at your heartstrings. Again, we want to say thank you to the CVB, the Chamber, Fish and Steel Equipment, Bowls Feed, and Mast Farms for working with us to make those episodes possible. It is intended to advertise the upcoming 40th Annual Nacogdoches Pro Rodeo and Steer Show, which is going to be March the 20, the 19th through the 21st. And also, of course, showcase Nacogdoches as a tourist destination. One more page. One more. So here's where you can get your phones out, because I want you to jot down or to save some events that's happening real, real soon. As we gear up for the pro rodeo, we want to invite each of you to the Kicks 105 Rodeo Radio Show, hosted at the Brookshire Brothers on South Street, February the 8th between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. Our title sponsors, Kicks 105, Mike Perry Dodge, G.G. Distributing, Batters Law Firm, and our newest sponsor, RV Outfitters of Texas, will all be there. We are going to also invite our, our other rodeo sponsors from all levels to come out and show that they too are supporters of the Nacogdoches Pro Rodeo and Steer Show. So stop by, purchase your tickets, register for drawings that will be awarded during the pro rodeo. Prizes such as a 39-inch TV. And what RV Outfitters has donated the, the flat-screen TV, an autographed guitar provided by Benita Creek Hall, a weekend rental at, from RV Station, a 48 court Yeti Cooler provided by G.G. Distributing, and there's, there's more. But we hope that these promotions such as these will excite our community leaders, our residents, and help to promote the rodeo near and far. When, when the Kicks 105 Live Radio Show is finished at Brookshire Brothers, you can saddle up and ride on over to the Expo Center for a night of country music with Cody Johnson and Roger Craig. So, and Mr. Cody Johnson has sold out our venue for the past two years, and also the NRG Stadium during the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo. So he's a big name. We've had people calling from all over, getting, wanting to know more information about the facility because they've never been to Nacogdoches. They're staying at the hotels. One gentleman that I talked to was staying at, over at the Fredonia. I told him all about it, how great it was and stuff. So he's so, super excited about it, wanting to know about Uber and all that kind of stuff. So, so it's definitely generating hotels, heads and beds. So in addition to getting ready for the pro rodeo and the concerts and all the other things that we're doing, we are also working with promoters such as Mr. Lawrence McCollum of Prairie View, Texas, to bring new fun multi-day events like his Next Generation Junior Calf Roping and Barrel Race, which will provide entertainment for all ages and generate revenue across Nacogdoches. You can find out more information about events coming up on our Facebook page as our contracts are confirmed. You can also access our calendar of events on our website. In closing, we want to say thank you to the CVB for extending us the use of their account with the Destinations International program. And, excuse me, also Ms. Joanna for the time that she took in helping us to generate our, our report. So thank y'all for having me. I wish everybody a happy and healthy prosperous new year. You got anything else?
Any questions? You should be very proud. You and your staff do an incredible and amazing job out there with the variety of things that you all do and are responsible for. So please extend our thanks to them also. And thank you for coming and doing this. This means a great deal to us.
Right. Well, one of the things I didn't mention, it's coming up real, real quick this week, Friday night, is the Love Inc. is having their fundraiser.
Yes, the Sheriff's Fund.
Yeah, so be sure, get your tickets and come out. That's a great cause. And so, and you know, one other thing, and I'll leave after that. The, we're also working with another promoter to bring a motocross event. So that's different, and we haven't done that in a long time. So, and it'll be generating a lot of hotels and stuff. So we're excited about that. Thank y'all so much for everything. Thank you for your support.
Of course. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, Presentation of the First Quarter 2019-2020 Fiscal Year Financial Update.
Mayor. Mayor, Council Pam Carbo, Director of Finance. This is probably the most uneventful financial report y'all are going to hear from me this year, which is a great thing. We do not like seeing big variances three months into our fiscal year, and thankfully, we do not see that this year. You have in your packet the actual numbers and all the detail. Just going to hit a few high points, and you're going to hear the same phrase over and over and over, which is within expectations, which is great for this time of the year. So starting with the general fund revenues. At this point, we look at, mostly we look at what we have collected at this point in prior years, because we have quite a few revenue lines that come in in multiple times of the year. Franchise fees, of course, for this time of year are where they're supposed to be, but they're a very small percentage because the majority of that money is our electric franchise that doesn't come in until July 31st. And so you can't really just look at your percentages. We kind of, on the whole, say 25% is where we should be, but that, that varies. So you're never going to be 25% on the franchise fees just because the majority of that comes in in July. Property taxes, sales tax, franchise fees, everything is, is pretty much where we want to see it at this point. Property taxes is another thing that we get loaded on the front end. The majority of those monies will be in by the end of this coming month. And so after the mid-year point, you're going to see those percentage changes going very small at that point. The only thing that we have in the general fund that is a little bit concerning at this point is court fines. They're down 3% to 4%, which is about $24,000, $25,000 when compared to this timeframe for the last two or three years. Can be lots of different variations for why that is. We really have no control over when people actually pay their fines, other than, you know, I guess locking them all up. So that, that is not an unusual thing to see, the variation there. Something that we do want to keep a check on. So next quarter, if we still see that we're, we're down 3%, 5%, 6%, then that's something that we will, will want to address. The municipal court judge, Mrs. Heather Watts, and I will have some discussions over kind of, you know, where they are and what could be happening. She, of course, is new there as well. So there could be some, some turnover in the employee thing that could have some issues there. But nothing, nothing that just causes me great pause at this point. Jumping over to expenditures on the general fund, all the departments are well within their budget. Hardly anyone is, is hitting right at the 25%. As y'all know, in the general fund, over 75, 76% of every department's budget is personnel-related. So we expect to be pretty much in line at this point. Unless we have vacant positions, we're pretty much always going to be really close to that 25%. We do anticipate some savings this year in unfilled positions. We are having some, some difficulty in filling quite a few positions. So that, that's always an area that we do at the end of the year, save some money. And in, speaking of that, this past year, we had estimated that we would end the year with around $1.8 million in reserves over our 25% requirement. At this point, it's looking now like that estimation's going to be closer to 3.4, which is great. That is the money, that's the reserves that y'all can use when it's time to sit down with the 2021 budget to look at capital improvements and capital items. And this is probably the healthiest our, our general fund reserves have been in a while. I would love to say it's because the department heads did a great job, and we, we stayed under budget, and all the revenues came in way over budget. But the truth of the matter is, it's about a million and a half dollars that we picked up this year, and 900, almost 900,000 of that is savings from a CIP item that came in well under budget. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we had budgeted $1.5 million for the electrical problems that we were having at the baseball. for the electrical problems that we were having at the baseball fields. And that came in significantly under what our original expectations were. And so we did save quite a bit of money. So that money rolls back into reserves. And so we picked up probably six hundred thousand dollars from additional revenue and savings within the department, but a little over nine hundred thou, or right under nine hundred thousand was from that one item. So I don't anticipate us being able to gain a million and a half every year, but it was nice to have that this year. So it does give you some leeway with some capital improvement projects in the general fund for next budget year. The utility fund, you will notice, I am way back in history. That should be twelve thirty-one nineteen, not six thirty nineteen. Missed that one. Water and sewer sales, right where they need to be at this point of the year. Y'all both, all understand that water and sewer sales, the majority of that revenue comes in the summer as well. So at this point, comparing fall to fall for the last two or three years, we're right where we should be. So that's good. This past year, water and sewer sales kind of started on a increase. You know, we went through quite a few years that we were selling considerably less water than we had in the past. It has been much wetter than normal, and so that does affect our sales. And so they are still, they're still down from where we wanted them to be when we did the rate study several years ago. But we're getting, we're getting to the point now where we're selling enough water that we're actually seeing some benefit, that part of that rate structure was to set aside additional funds for future CIP problem, issues in water and sewer. And so now we're able to set aside a couple of million dollars a year for that, that we weren't in the past. So that is, that is encouraging. Expenses, same way, within expectations. All the departments are right where they should be for this point during the year. And in cash balances, we didn't have any windfalls in the utility fund this year. No, no nine hundred thousand dollar savings. So we're pretty much where we had anticipated being. Pretty much the same thing goes for the sanitation fund. All revenues are right where they should be. All expenditures, right where they should be. Estimated in cash balance, pretty much where we had estimated them to be at that point. So nothing real flashy and fancy for this point of the year. But like I said, that's usually a good thing. You don't want to see big variations, especially in your expenditures this early in the fiscal year. So budget-wise, we're toeing the line right now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a couple of questions I'd rather come into. So Jim left us in good shape then, huh?
He did. He gave us nine hundred thousand dollars back. We'll give him credit for it.
Well, I was going to ask that part too. But owning the billing permit fees, year over year, did we estimate a percentage as to how it's going to grow?
You know, building permits are very difficult for us to budget, because you never really know what's going to come along. Some years, I think it was last year or the year before, we had budgeted seventy thousand, and we ended up over a hundred thousand dollars. Had a couple of big projects come through. Some years, we budget seventy-five, and we rack in forty. So it's really difficult. We kind of, the way we look at our revenues is, we look at a five-year span, but then we are very conservative. And so we're not going to build a budget and have our expenditures at a level that we do not know for sure we're going to be able to cover with revenues. And so we are pretty conservative with that, because it's something that just varies. Depends on what kind of development that we have and how many people are building new subdivisions or businesses or homes. And so that one is one of those things that we really, we kind of stay on the conservative side. And if it, if we bring in considerably more revenue, that adds to the, to the reserves at the end of the year.
And since it's reported on the first quarter, the unfilled position, that's a lot of revenue in there. I mean, what positions are we still need to fill?
I'm sure that our HR director can expound on that. We always are down multiple police positions. And I don't know, right now, was it four, three?
Eight.
Eight, oh, see, yes. And that is a significant amount. Even a quarter's worth of salary for eight patrol officers is a pretty significant amount. But we do have lots of other positions, you know, as well. But that one is the one that always comes to mind, because we struggle with the police officers, yeah.
Yeah, I understand the struggle with police department. But the other positions not filled, is that because we don't offer enough pay scale? Or is?
I believe that's probably part of the problem. We have a couple of new positions that are new for this budget year, and those have not been filled yet. I have one in my department. We have not advertised that position yet. We are waiting, probably going to wait until mid-year to work on that for us, just because it's hard for us to put someone in during audit time. I want, you know, I don't want to set them up to fail. So we try to do that mid-year, so that we're kind of through the audit, through the budget process, and then, and then start someone. But that, every department's a little bit different. But yeah, I'm sure that salaries is always an issue for us, always.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
When we were going through the budget process for, I guess, this year's budget, we discussed a little bit about the inter-fund transfers. And Mr. Jeffers said that he was going to look into, or have somebody look into either, and I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I remember correctly where we left it, but other options or more background information on it. And I was just wondering if that was being followed up on and what the status of that is.
What, what he asked me to do at that point was to build a inter-fund transfer amount based on what, best-case scenario, what would, what would we really like to see? And then what are we currently doing? And the difference, and I would have to go back and pull that. I want to say it's a million and a half, two million dollars. Don't quote me, I will get that information to you. But it's less than two million. But that's the, that's the amount of money that general fund revenues are going to have to find. And that's a lot of money for general fund revenues to have to find when the majority of our revenues come from sales and property taxes. And now, property taxes, of course, as y'all know, January first, we have a limit of three and a half percent that we can raise property taxes before we hit rollback instead of the eight that was in the past. And so that, that kind of lessens the amount that we can raise by property taxes. And then sales tax, you know, we don't have direct control over the sales tax. I mean, we do have some indirect things that we can do with economic development, but raising two million dollars in one year is going to be extremely difficult. That is going to be something that we're going to have to phase in over time. And in order to do that, it's not only going to be a additional revenue sources, it's going to be trying to find where we can cut expenses to make the, you know, to kind of bridge the gap, because two million dollars is going to be extremely difficult for the general fund to find. But yeah, that's something that during this next budget process, y'all will see, this is what we need to balance the budget. And this is what I would like for us to do if we were at all possible, and see those differences in the numbers, just so you'll know. Thank you.
Is that considered best business practice, or is that a normal business practice?
The actual transfers?
Actual transfers.
Yeah, now, that's, that's a very, it's a very much legal thing. Every, we have two components of that, which is basically kind of a franchise fee. We pay ourselves from the water and sewer funds, sanitation funds, just like the electric companies do, the gas companies do, for the use of those right-of-ways. So that's one component of it. The other component, of course, is the general fund departments that provide services to utility and sanitation. So my department, I know Jim has explained this, and you're probably are tired of hearing this, but my department, we do financial statements, we do bank recs, we do Everett collections for all funds. And so a portion of my department is, our budget is allocated to utility and sanitation. That's where that transfer comes from. So a, you know, let's just say my department budget is a million dollars. Woo, I could do some spending. And, and a third of that is going to be transferred in from utility to cover the work that I do for utility, and a third from sanitation. And we have various departments that we have splits like that on. You know, that is, that is the portion that we need to work on, because we have, pretty much all of our departments are a third, a third, a third. Is that, do I do a third of my work for the sanitation? Probably, probably not. Those are the things that need to be addressed, and those change those amounts. And so that is where we would be able to make some corrections, is actually to do a analysis of what timeframe each department spends on work and those other funds if we were to find, you know, new revenues or reduced expenditures in the general fund so that we could give up those transfer monies. And like I said, it's going to be a long-term process. It's nothing that you can fix in one or two or three or four years. It's probably going to be a long-term process.
And that's what you're saying is part of, of doing your ideal estimation of that is figuring out, more or less trying to guess at how much of your time, for example?
Yes, and it's always going to be an estimate without a very in-depth study, which would cost tons of money or tons of staff time to figure out exactly what, and that changes. I mean, some days I spend a lot of time with, with my employees in the water office, and some days they run smooth and I never hear from them. And so it, it moves well, you know, as well. So every department's a little bit different. But we would have to come to some understanding on the whole of what, what is required of our departments from sanitation, utility, to kind of get a good idea. And right now, it's just pretty much a split, even split.
So since you stated that was legal, there's no restriction on amount that you can transfer?
Well, you know, that is where it's, it's, it's a best-practice thing. We don't want, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to transfer in twenty million dollars just because we can. You know, we, we have to have some foundation in, in what's right or wrong. Right. You know what I'm saying? We don't, we don't want to, for lack of a better word, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul. But we have to, at some point, make sure that we can justify those numbers. And that is the thing, is making sure that we can justify what we're doing. And we can, it's just we could probably tighten those numbers up a lot if we needed to. And we do need to, it's just, you know, coming up with, with additional revenues in the general fund. So any ideas, I'll be happy to entertain that.
No, I, I know that, you know, government entities are treated different than private industries. But that's how private business survives.
Yeah, now it is. And that's why, we're a little bit different, you know. And that's one thing that people don't quite understand when they come in from private accounting and to government accounting. It is a whole, it's a whole new world. But yeah, we, we deal with, with some parameters that the private sector doesn't have to.
Mr. Hogan, did you want to make a comment?
Well, just from my observation, my history is it is appropriate to have standard practices for those things that meet governmental standards. And of course, the more you draw, and I've been in communities that drew too much from utility funds, it dries up the rates on the utility funds you have to recover from your taxpayers through utility bills or solid waste bills. So there's a balance in there that I'm sure Pam and your new manager will work through those to be fair. And that's, that's the best thing, that's the best practice, because I've been in communities where they're just, they're overweighted, how they charge those things. And if you're not careful, you get to depend on that overweighting, and it's really hard to make that adjustment once you start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you ever seen or heard of a community that doesn't do it at all?
There are communities, smaller communities especially, that just simply have to include every, all of that into just the general fund. And they, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of pressure sometimes on utility rates, solid waste rates, and things like that. And, you know, for instance, the cost of treating wastewater has grown exponentially in the last thirty years. And so it's actually sometimes more expensive to treat the wastewater than it is to treat the water. So, and a lot of break payers and bill payers get upset about that. Why is it costing me so much more? Well, there's a lot of regulations and things that go into the new standards that make you have to spend that money on there. So it is, there are some practices, but I'll tell you, the best practice for any government entity is to do this practice through your enterprise funds. And I congratulate you on doing that.
So if we are at market rates or below market rates for sanitation for water, is the primary motivation for wanting to decrease that just perception?
Decrease the rates or decrease the transfer?
Decrease the transfer percentages?
You know, I would, you know, we've had, we've had some citizen feedback on that in the past. And it's, it's quite understandable that, you know, a customer that is a water customer, we, not, not all of our citizens that pay property taxes may pay water or sewer, depending on where they live, or if they rent from someone, it's included, whatever. And so sometimes the, the idea that, well, I pay property taxes, but then I'm paying all these exorbitant water and sewer rates, which we do not have exorbitant water and sewer rates. And if y'all remember our comparisons, we really honestly are in a great area for water and sewer rates around here. We do a lot with the money that we actually do collect. But yeah, I mean, I think a lot of it is perception that we are transferring too much money, and therefore our rates are too high because we're having to supplement the general fund. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that that is, I don't think that's a fair assessment. Yes, we probably do transfer more than we should or we could, but it's kind of the world we live in, and we're kind of, we're kind of special, because we, we live without that other part of the sales tax that the hospital district gets. And a lot of other cities have the ability to, to assess more than the one cent on the sales tax, that they are able to fund some economic development. We have to fund our general fund and our economic development with our one cent. And so we are a little bit special across the state in the fact that we just have that one cent. Had we had more than that, yes, then we probably would not need that two million dollars, million and a half. I keep saying two, I'm not real sure what it is, but from the utility fund. So we have a combination of problems that have kind of created this situation. And it's, it's something that we need to, to move forward. And I will tell you, we have the last two years. Actually, our transfers this year are less than they were last year. We have worked down on some of those transfer percentages. And so we, we have been able to reduce it a little along. But like I said, it's going to take more than one or two or three years to recoup that amount of money. But we are working. Every year, we work those transfers as slow as we possibly can and still be able to, to make general fund function efficiently.
Another reason I feel like we're a little special, you mentioned, is that in our ownership and maintained ownership of the sanitation, you know, if we wanted to mortgage off the future and sell that and join the ranks of probably most of what you see up north, or in North Dallas or wherever, yeah, we could fund that tomorrow. But I mean, so that, that's another really big thing that we've got on our balance sheet that, I mean, say you sell it for fifty million bucks or whatever, there's your two million for twenty-five years. So I, I think there's a lot of nuanced things there that don't oftentimes get compared rightly.
Exactly. And, and, and there are, we, we have a great asset in our landfill, because lots of cities do not have that. And I will tell you, we've had companies come to us, want to take over the sanitation collection. And part of that was to take the landfill for a certain number of years. And when you sit down and look at the numbers, the value that we have in owning our own landfill is just, it's crazy out there, because a lot of people don't. But you're right, when you look at cities our size, you have to look at everything. Do they, do they have their own water treatment facilities or wastewater? Because a lot of these people have conglomerates, and they work together with multiple cities. And yes, they still pay for a portion of it. We have that entire infrastructure that we have, have went out and built in our own, and those are costs associated with those bonds that we issued for that. And so, yes, you have to kind of look at everything. And so we are special. I, I mean, we are special. We're the oldest town in Texas. We are special.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Well, thank you and Buck and your staff.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all you do. Agenda item number eight, consider a resolution calling the regular election of city council members for Southeast Ward and Southwest Ward in and for the city of Nacogdoches, Texas. Ms. Vincent?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and Council, I'm Jan Vincent, City Secretary. And the item on the agenda for your consideration is to approve a resolution calling for the regular election of city council members for the Southeast and Southwest Ward. Election is scheduled for May the second. We began accepting applications on January the fifteenth, and the last date of file for a place on the ballot is February the fourteenth. Happy Valentine's Day. We normally contract with the county for this service, but until we're sure we'll have an election, I won't have a contract for you to look at.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. Any public comment? Okay. Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
Move to approve the resolution, agenda item eight as written.
I'll second.
Moving second, and if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. All those opposed, motion passes. We will have no executive session this evening, so that concludes our meeting of February the 4th, 2020. Thank you all for attending.